...meeting of December. Today's date is December 17th and the time is 5:02.
Mr. Generalin?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Candel?
Here.
Simco here.
Could be wise for a pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our December 3 meeting. I move approval.
Second, Mr. Generalin?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney? Yes. Mr. Candel?
Yes. I don't have any deletions or additions to the agenda, but I think Oliver has a couple.
Good evening, trustees.
Hi, Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two additions proposed to the agenda for tonight's meeting, both under the Fire Department, first being 19-158, Resolution 19-158, on-time transfer of unused vacation term, and Resolution 19-159 entering into the agreement with Lucas County for the ongoing countywide emergency medical services agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other we want to discuss under zoning is how we want to handle the zoning meetings this year. Remember last year, I don't know how we finally, remember we had the six o'clock for that? I don't know, I'll give you a little time to think about it. But we've got a zoning request coming up, maybe the next meeting, so we need to talk about how we're going to handle that. If we want to do it at five o'clock or try to do it at six. We tried six and it didn't seem to, if you remember, it didn't seem to work out too well. Well, we'll talk about that under zoning.
Have we addressed that with the timing of our meetings? Do we anticipate changing our meetings to six o'clock?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Or we could let it go until we have an organizational meeting in January and we can decide that would work out, wouldn't it, Darrell? For you?
Well, great, how the zone change is on track from January 7th.
Well, that'd be the meeting we're organizing, so we'll probably have to, well, we'll talk about it, give it a little time, think about it. Yeah, all right. I don't think we have any deletions or anybody to speak for the items on the agenda? Anyone signed up? Okay. Take care of that, we'll move on to zoning, Darrell.
Good evening.
Evening.
I promise my agenda's not as scary as it looks. The first item is the monthly report in the interest of time. If there's any questions, I can answer it if you like. The only thing that I would like to mention is on page 5, I'm on, the upcoming zone change meeting, or zone change request, rather, 3137 Noel Avenue. The Savannah Township Zoning Commission recommended approval of that on December 11th. So again, that's on track for January 7th. I could speak to the applicant and see if they'd be willing to go January 21st meeting? You know, if maybe the board wants to do that.
Why don't we just have it on the 7th, so we just need to get the time worked out, right?
Right. Yeah, I think we are doing on the 7th, but if we want to do it at six o'clock, that's sort of been our procedure. But sometimes we get done with our meeting and then we're sitting around for 10 or 15 minutes. I wonder if the applicant in this case could just come at five and, well, you've got to publish the time now.
Right, we would have to send out notices at least 10 days in advance.
Yeah.
I think we just stay with the six and, you know, we've had enough executive session, I'm sure they'll have one on the sixth instead of the seventh, so.
Yeah. Look, is that time going right? We'll do 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay. Thank you. If there's no questions on the monthly report, then I'll go to my resolutions. The first one I have is 19-142. This is to appoint a regular member to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Al Hayes' term expires at the end of this year and Mr. Hayes has requested that he be reappointed or is interested in being reappointed.
I move approval of appoint Mr. Hayes again.
Second?
How long has he been on the board?
I've been here since '08 and he was here then, so I.
Do we have term limits or do we have a policy?
We don't. We talked about it once, the board, but we didn't, we didn't make a decision, but.
And these appointments are for three years?
Five years. Five members, each member serves a five-year term, so that every year somebody's term is expired.
This is a comment not from Mr. Hayes, but I think, I think maybe every, you know, there should be a maximum term and I don't know how the rest of you feel, but otherwise we don't get new board in there.
I agree 100%.
And it's always, it's not that, it's not that Al hasn't done a good job. Mary Himmeline's been here a long time, does an excellent job, but it seems to me we should be thinking about maybe term limits or something, maybe, I don't know, two or three times. Oliver, would you look into that and maybe come back to the board with some recommendations? What did you do in this city?
Most certainly can look into that. In Sioux St. Marie, a number of the boards would have a requirement where somebody could serve two terms and then they would have to leave for a period of one year. And then after that one-year period elapses, they could come back on through appointment by the governing body.
Why, is that, why don't we make a decision or ask Oliver to get back to us on some recommendations? Is that all right? Okay, thank you.
We've got a motion and a second on appointing Al Hayes on Resolution 19-142. Any discussion or call roll? Mr. Generalin?
Well, what do we, what would be our intention moving forward? Again, just because of the length of the term, if it was a shorter term, I'd say let's go ahead and appoint Al this time through, but a five-year term, I mean, if he's been on the board for 20 years, it might be time to get a new perspective, but.
Well, but I think because we don't have a policy, I feel like, I feel like Al's been a good volunteer.
Yeah, by all means.
It's hard to find volunteers, but I think we should certainly in the future think about limits.
Yeah, like Zach, you know, he's been wanting, Zach's put his resume in to be on the board for the future. We've got some new people on it. I'm not agreeing, I'm not disagreeing. After the fact of.
But I'd hate to do it, I'd hate to do it. I'm afraid Al would feel like.
Yeah.
I personally think we probably ought to keep Al, not do it this time, but for next year, let's have a policy.
Second? John?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Mahoney? Yes. Mr. Candel?
Yes.
Thank you. My next resolution is 19-143. This is for the alternate to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Jason Levine, whose term expires December 31st. Mr. Levine has expressed interest in re-upping for another year. The alternate member serves one-year terms.
I'll offer Resolution 19-143 for Jason Levine.
Second?
Mr. Generalin?
Yes.
Mr. Candel?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you. Next resolution is 19-144. This is for a second alternate to the Board of Zoning Appeals. This would be a new position. The ORC allows us to have up to two alternates for each board and the BZA has been meeting just about every month of the year. So we really could use a second alternate and the trustees have received the applications of two members, or I'm sorry, two residents that are interested in being appointed to that position.
Did you have a recommendation for us on that or? I saw something.
Not on that one. I do not know either gentleman. So I, did I make a recommendation?
I messed up on that, I didn't read the, I thought you had a recommendation for us. Can we put that off till the next meeting? I'd like to review the apps, maybe you guys got a chance to look at them.
I did, yeah.
Do you have any feelings?
Well, I mean, Zach's been coming to these meetings for years, you know, Zach Mercer, so I, you know, he's had, you know, trying to get, but no, I mean, to answer your question, I, you know, I would probably approve Zach.
I'll second.
But if you want to wait to see the second one.
We've got to keep moving. I'll second that. That's my fault.
So it moved and seconded.
Zach Mercer?
Mr. Mahoney moved it. Mr. Candel seconded. Mr. Generalin?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Candel?
Yes.
Thank you. Next resolution is 19-145, appoint member to the Zoning Commission. This is Mary Himmeline's term that expires December 31st. Ms. Himmeline has expressed interest in being reappointed.
I'll offer Resolution 19-145 to appoint Mary Himmeline.
Second?
Mr. Generalin?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Candel?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 19-146, alternate to the Zoning Commission, one-year term. Joe Balinski's term expires December 31st. Mr. Balinski has expressed interest in being reappointed.
If he's, if he's not in it.
If he's not asked.
I'll move Resolution 19-146 to appoint Joe Balinski as an alternate.
Second? Mr. Generalin?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Candel?
Yes.
Thank you. My next resolution is 19-147, compensation of zoning board members. I sent the trustees a little bit of a write-up on that in regards to the last raise in compensation was in 2003, when it went up from $30 per meeting, each board member, to 50, the current $50. Zoning Department is requesting an increase to $70 per meeting per board member.
I'll move Resolution 19-147 to increase compensation of the zoning board members.
Second? Mr. Generalin?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Candel?
Yes.
Thank you. And my last item is Resolution 19-149, authorization of abatement of debris for the property at 1642 Rad Row. The property owner's been contacted and has not complied or responded at this time.
I'll move Resolution 19-149, authorization of abatement of debris at 1642 Rad Row.
Second? Mr. Generalin?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Candel?
Yes.
Anything, Mr. Darrell?
Thank you.
No, that's all right. Bob?
Good evening, my similar monthly report for November. Had a chance to take a look at some key notes where we did have a two-inch snowfall and it kind of slowed us down a little bit on our leaf pickup, but at that point we were working on our third pickup and completed it. There was some storm damage as well. We had a delay in our leaf pickup for two days picking up trees due to windstorm. Five or six different locations throughout the township seemed to just be random depending on the foliage, dead tree areas. We did get some good news this month. Our 2021 OPWC project, which is Quarry Road Improvements, received a 100% grant. And this is a significant grant. It's about $800,000 savings to the township. This money comes from the state from LTIP program and this program is basically the tax revenue that goes back for fuel tax, back to the state. They put a program together and they go out to different communities and look for good projects to put that money back into and Quarry Road qualified. I really got to give kudos to Sarah Rolland, who is the township president as well. She's our engineer with the Lucas County and those guys help us out quite a bit in Joel Palmer and Josh Hazard, so I appreciate their assistance on all they do on our projects and all the inspectors as well.
Rob, question, do you think they'll do that bike lane? Is that any thought on that design for that, like that?
For the north end, no. The south end, which is.
I know, but I just thought.
I'm sorry, the south end, no. But the partial north end from the Rose Street to Whiteford, that's still a possibility of getting a shoulder in there and that would be a township project as well. We could look for outside resources and grants to assist with that, but the project that's in the queue right now, this one, would not have that. That road, the traffic count is very high. The connecting neighborhoods has, will get between Wildwood and the Quarry Woods area, which is the Springbrook Road, there's a crossover there. There'll be an improvement to that location when they do a project for the crossover. Don't know the scope of it yet, but there will be an additional stripage and some additional warning lights set up for that crossover for the park as well. But this project in its entirety, we're not looking at that particular one. As a matter of fact, the county has approached us, the new engineer who'll be taking over is looking at all the roads within the county that have historically been township roads, but wouldn't be categorized as a county road now. And Quarry Road, that portion of Quarry between Sylvania and Central would qualify for that road as a county road just because of the traffic count, the width and the location of it. So we're looking at possibly in the future, transport, kind of doing a load swap. So they would take that portion of Quarry Road and we would take the portion of Flanders in the northeast section of the township between Alexis and.
Kevishsky.
Lasky, there you go. So that would become, because that's more of a township road. We have had lots of complaints in that area for vegetation growth along the roadway, salt and stuff, so it would be a good fit for us to do that and we would not lose any mileage, a very little mileage.
Get Quarry off our back too. That's a, that's a heavily with the.
It would help the county as well, just for our routes, the way our routes are designed. They would not have to go send one truck all the way up to the north just to do that road. And then Quarry Road would, for the most part, would, our guys would still be traveling heavily, so it would still get some attention if it needed it in the county. But they, our shifts are a little different, so they cover it pretty well. So I'm not concerned about that at all, but.
What did you, did you have, you had a number in the budget, didn't you, for Quarry?
For the project?
Yeah, what was our share? Now it's 100% grant, you said, right?
Yeah.
I remember what we saved there.
We were saving about a half a million.
Wow. About a half a million.
That would be our little share portion of it. When the, the total numbers come out in the project comes out, I'll give you an update on that, on the cost of it, but that was the estimated cost when we submitted the application. Other than the estimate, the page two, a lot of the projects were wrapping up. Again, the second resurfacing project of 2.71 miles, that project is sold, but we have a completion date of one July and when you see the end-of-year report, there'll be an asterisk on that number for us, because I want to keep that as a project that was done in 2019, because we sold it and budgeted, so that money has actually come out of 2018's budget. So that road mileage will be considered a 2018, even though it we completed in 2020.
So impact or bonus or reference by the numbers?
No, I just think that's how the purchase orders are set up and we want to, we want to keep that money separate, so when we start the new projects in 20, they're budgeted for our new budget for 20. I got a couple of new pieces for the report and we're just still tweaking them yet, but if you want to go, you got the second portion of that. I don't know if you have the feel. I didn't, I didn't add a lot of service department, maintenance department comments on that portion of it, but we're looking at putting together a different type of report. This is a transaction listed by customer ID, which is the road, police and fire. These are just our total fuel usage, just kind of reports we can pull from the, from the fuel master programs that we have. Gives us a general idea of how much fuel per month we're using. We're going to start incorporating that into our maintenance department. This program slides into a new iWork program we've purchased for our fleet maintenance department and those numbers will be identified by vehicle, by user. We can identify them. We'll go to the next page. It'll be the next. This is just a slice of what the monthly report for maintenance, what I would see. I've not put this obviously on our monthly report for the board, but it will be visible if you'd like to see every repair, every cost, who's doing what, how we're doing it. We can break this report down into its simplest form and make it very simplistic, or we can keep adding things to it. Oliver will want to develop these reports, but as you can see, if you keep scrolling down a little bit further, you can see the actual cost by department that is broke out by department. So if you're looking at the Fire Department's cost for the garage this year for parts of maintenance, it's there on the bottom right and then if you keep scrolling down, you can see each different departments. So it's just to give you an idea of what this new system will do, but just like any computer system, it's whatever you put in it is what you get out of it. So we got to make sure we're trying to put good information into it and the mechanics and Ralph, the service manager, have been doing a great job learning the program. We purchased two new computers for them to use back there, which will keep up with the system and they're tough books, so they can be portable, they can be manhandled around all of grease and mechanic areas. It'll be something very similar you'd see in any service garage, professional garage or maintenance area. So just in addition to the technology we're trying to implement back there. And there'll also be a service request portion of this. I have, have it on my phone, a couple of other guys have it on their phone now. It's an app that's on our phones. It's an iWork app. You can actually use your phone, you can use any desktop within our network. So if you're sitting at a workstation at your desk, you can put a service request in through there. It's a very simple, one-page form, you fill it out. If you're mobile and you're out on the road, if you're a cop, you're a fireman and you want to put a service request in, you can download the app. You can actually take a picture if you can't describe it very well. You can take a picture of it and upload the picture right from your phone and sends it and then we can set that up to send to whoever we want. So if it's a police issue, we can have it set up to whoever they want to know or be notified, as well as it will come to myself and the service manager. So it's going to be a good technology, but we're kind of working the bugs out in the road department before we launch it with everybody else to make sure everything's working good and then they give us some time to talk to the other department heads and explain how everything would work, so they can disseminate it down to their employees as well. But it's very simple, one-page program and I'm excited about getting it out there and seeing how it works for us, so.
All right. Great.
Anything else? Any questions for me?
Oh, great job.
I have one resolution on that. This is Resolution 19-148. We hired the service manager, we gave him a range, we started him out at the low end of the range, which was significantly lower than the existing service manager and still lower than the percentages of the current management team that we have as far as percentage-wise. So I'm requesting to bring him up to the scale that was advertised to 3226 an hour starting December 3rd, which was his six-month probationary period. We completed that and he was counseled. He was signed off by the administration as well and I highly recommend you approve all of that.
I mean, his evaluation's pretty good, is what you're telling us.
I believe so. It was reviewed at all, it was reviewed by the Human Resources Department for errors or corrections and.
I'll move Resolution 19-148, authorization of the service manager. I'll move rate.
Second? Mr. Generalin?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Just as a, a sign that's still about 10% lower than the previous service manager, just because of longevity and stuff.
Good job, good progress in your department.
Good evening. Under the administrative category, the first resolution is 19-150, a resolution to adopt compensatory leave time policies. As trustees are aware, the Fair Labor Standards Act provides public sector employers with the ability to provide compensatory time to employees under defined conditions. As trustees are also aware, the collective bargaining agreements entered into by the township and its various bargaining units include provisions on this benefit. Adoption of the prepared and presented policies would establish a structure and govern the provision of compensatory time for eligible non-union employees. Importantly, one policy has been drafted for eligible full-time employees and one has been drafted for eligible part-time employees. The township would reserve the right to approve the accrual of compensatory time to approve the use of the leave time and continue to meet the necessary operating needs of the township. Be glad to answer any questions on the policies.
I'll offer Resolution 19-150 to adopt compensatory leave time policies.
Second? Any discussion on the motion? Any questions?
Mr. Generalin?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Candel?
Yes.
Resolution 19-154 would authorize further engagement with Attorney Don Sanderson and as trustees are aware, on March 19th, the board authorized an agreement with Attorney Don Sanderson as additional legal counsel at the hourly rate of $190 for a total amount not to exceed $10,000 for the purpose of negotiating and assisting with the creation of a joint economic development district and related matters. Through December 4th, a total of just over $8,000 has been expended for the approved purposes. The completed work includes the confirmation of the process through which a district would be created, the drafting of a district contract to which the city of Sylvania and Sylvania Township would be other parties and this template could be used if desired for other jurisdictions and the township, the drafting of a required economic development plan, which would be associated with a contract, meetings with representatives from the city regarding the parameters of a long-term agreement, the drafting of petitions which must be signed by property owners for inclusion within a JED, and the evaluation of the feasibility of including properties such as Sylvania School Building properties into a district. In the coming months, it's expected additional work will occur as the city and township will work to execute the necessary actions to include the Oakley Village complex within a district and the necessary joint agreement between the parties. Accordingly, an additional allocation in the amount of $4,000 is being requested to provide a total of roughly $6,000 for this anticipated work. Thank you.
I'll move Resolution 19-154 to authorize further engagement with Sanderson's law office in regard to legal counsel for JEDs.
Second?
Any discussion or questions for you, Mr. Darrell?
Mr. Generalin?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Candel?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 19-155 would provide for an appointment to the Sylvania Area Joint Recreation District. As trustees are aware, there's currently one appointment to the Joint Recreation District, which will become vacant upon January 1st. This will be for a three-year appointment. In response to an advertisement for this opening, the township.
In response to an advertisement for this opening, the township received two applications from Richard Morris and Kate Fineski. The appointment is made at the discretion of the trustees, and as a note, Ted Leslie, who's currently serving as EBITD, confirmed his plans to now reapply. Thank you.
For discussion, I move Resolution 19-155, approve appointment to Sylvania Area Joint Recreation District. And that's to discuss the two candidates.
Do you need a second to have the discussion?
Yes.
I think we do, yeah. Mr. Genoway?
I look over both apps, and they're both pretty good candidates in my mind. Kate Fineski's on the Sylvania, I think they call it Sylvania Recreation Corporation, apparently, right now. So I guess I'd favor her maybe to move up, and that would leave an opening on there. I'm not sure how she got appointed there, but I think we ought to recommend that the rec district take a look at Richard Morris maybe for, I'm not sure how Kate wound up with that appointment, but it's not our board. But I think we ought to ask the rec district, take a look at Richard Morris for her replacement. They both look like pretty good candidates.
I'm good with that. And the motion would be if Kate Fineski has the appointment?
And I would ask the administration to see if they can work Richard Morris into maybe replacing Kate. I'm not sure what that procedure is, but it's the Sylvania Recreation Corporation, that board.
Okay. Call the roll, Mr. Genoway?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
You're out of roll here.
No, thank you. Resolution 19-156 will provide for an appointment to the Sylvania Community Arts Commission. As trustees are aware, there's one-year appointment to the Sylvania Community Arts Commission that is to become effective on January first, twenty twenty. The current appointee, Austin Cerner, has submitted an application to be reappointed for one year, and the appointment is made at the discretion of the trustees, and Mr. Cerner was the lone applicant. Thank you.
I think he's presently serving there to start right now.
I'll offer Resolution 19-156 to approve Austin Cerner as Sylvania Community Arts Commission.
Second.
Mr. Genoway?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
And finally, Resolution 19-157, a resolution calling for collaboration and cooperation with the city of Sylvania to resolve annexation disputes. As trustees are aware, the township and city have a long-established record of cooperating in areas involving recreation, fire service, emergency policing services, the senior center, economic development, and the support of local nonprofits. As we are all aware, the city's actively working to annex over one hundred parcels within and around the Country Rock subdivision, and has expressed plans to annex anywhere between four hundred and eight hundred parcels in future years. The growth of the broader community over recent decades has been supported by collaborative initiatives and forced annexation by water service termination that has threatened to undermine that stability. Accordingly, Sylvania Township maintains the position, as we are aware, that collaborative efforts can foster growth and development with sustainable and community-focused outcomes, thereby advancing the quality of life within the entire community, as opposed to annexation which strains intergovernmental relations, impedes growth, and evokes progress, established by countless stakeholders from decades past. As such, the included resolution has been prepared to qualify the city to cease its annexation efforts so that the parties may negotiate in good faith toward a resolution to the disputes, hand of their energies, hand focus, toward serving the public good as well as increasing efficiencies. Thank you.
I'll move, so we can have discussion, I move Resolution 19-157 to send a resolution calling for collaboration and cooperation with the city of Sylvania to resolve annexation disputes. And I would suggest we send it to at least the board, the mayor, and the president of council.
Second.
You want to have a discussion, or I think we pretty much, I think, I, I'm really personally saddened at the city's efforts, but I think we've got to keep trying for the good of the community to work with them.
Call the roll. Mr. Genoway?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dave, you're next.
I have the monthly report, and you all, people had it sent to you, and we're close to all receiving all revenue and all funds except the fire fund, we have a little bit more money coming in. And we're doing well on our revenue, it's really what's projected. I'm hoping the fire fund gets up to a hundred percent of what we projected, but we'll see. As far as expenses, as we, you know, we always pay attention to those, and we are doing well with our expenses right now. We're, I think that we're, we're really on, we're on track in that. So I don't really have anything else to, to report on the, on the month-end analysis. It'll be interesting to see what, you know, comes in, in December, is how we kind of wrap things up.
Any questions for Mr. Simko on the report?
Emron will do the resolutions for the board. Emron?
Yeah, Resolution 19-151 is transferring of letting to year-end interest, and some of the air auction proceeds to the respective funds. We had discussed about this and then decided that maybe from next year we'll discontinue this practice for the transferring of that interest, because law does not require that we have to transfer the general fund interest. And then one of them is five hundred and two dollars, which need to be transferred from general fund to the list fund, because for any kind of forfeited property, funds have to be, have to come to general fund and then transfer to the list.
I think we talked about this in the budget hearing. I'll move Resolution 19-151, transfer of funds, year-end interest, and auction proceeds.
Second. Mr. Genoway?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Next, Dan?
Resolution 19-152, these are really the year-end adjustments if you make, wherever the appropriation is needed, is not needed, we reduce it, and then where, and wherever it's needed, we increase it. A lot of these relates to the year-end grants, some of the money which has, which never came, I mean, we need to reduce that, and/or some have to be filled out. So that's why you see there, some of the amounts are very small. One of the amounts is taken like on the second page, the Hopey PWC project, they might never came, so we have to reduce this body to that situation.
I'll move Resolution 19-152, township appropriations for unencumbered balance and reducing appropriations for year-end.
Mr. Genoway?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Resolution 19-153 relates to the transfer appropriation. It's merely on the, basically the year-end adjustments which we need to make within the funds. I mean, wherever the money is needed and wherever we increase, we just, I mean, transfer to the other line item within the same funds.
I'll move Resolution 19-153, transfer of appropriations for the end of the year.
Second. Mr. Genoway?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes. I think that takes care of it. Hearing of the public non-agenda items, oh, Jim Crosby. Jim?
James Crosby, forty-five hundred block of West Barn Road. Good evening, gentlemen. I know this is the last regular meeting of the township trustees for this year, and you'll be having your organizational meeting with the first meeting of the coming year. I don't know if you've given any consideration, but I would express an interest in, in return of a later township regular meeting start date, time. The five PM may have been beneficial for some people here on the board, and maybe for some in attendance, but I think for the general community, it would be appreciated if the regular meeting start time could be moved back to a different time. I'm thinking that my online, a five forty-five start time would be beneficial to allow people an opportunity to be in attendance, and also will give you the opportunity to finish some of the regular and usual township business prior to wanting to move into a designated zoning issued time. Likewise, for the coming year, I would appreciate at some point in time that your appointments to the boards, with the internal appointments and external appointments, I think it's reasonable to expect a report from them occasionally, perhaps quarterly or twice a year, as to what is going on with the board appointments. So like, what can be happening can be reported back to the people who appointed them, and then also could be known in a public meeting as to what's happening with those board appointments. And those are the two things I think for the coming year would be appreciated and beneficial. And likewise, I do notice a change in a bit of the township format with the opportunity for discussion amongst the board members, which is very appreciated. Thank you.
I, I think your points are well-taken, Bud. I'm not sure on the zoning, we would need reports. We, we get a lot of reports already on the zoning, but I think you're talking about the rec district.
Not necessarily the township-run zoning issues, that seem to be well-reported. They, they do their own business.
I just wanted to.
And you have, you have the zoning director here.
Right.
Monthly. The other meetings that you have, you have appointments to Tim McGod, you have appointments to the Arts Commission, you have appointments to Sage Yard, you have internal appointments to SCAT, you have internal appointments to Sylvania Area Family Services.
I just wanted to be sure we're on the same wavelength.
I believe that we are.
Okay. Thank you. Would you look into that, Oliver, and so we could do that at our organizational meeting next year?
I will.
Our organizational meeting?
Yes.
Let's take a look at that and see what it might entail. Now, I know on the rec district, that report, I think it'd be better coming from Dave, my initial reaction, rather than, we have three appointments on that board, and Dave Simko serves there right now, but he might not be the appointment next year. So some of those, we'd have to give some thought as to, if we've got four appointments and we're asking for a report, we'll have to figure out who we're asking it from, but I think it's a, seems to me to be a reasonable suggestion. And let's take that up at our organizational meeting, if that's okay with you, Oliver.
Certainly, myself and Sammy have been discussing the upcoming of the appointments, and we'd be glad to take that up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bud. Board discussion with other staff reports, first is fire department, and they've had a couple of walk-on resolutions that Mr. Turner already addressed.
Yes, sir. Good evening, gentlemen. My November monthly report, as you'll see in page number one, we had a, a passing away of one of our retired, longtime members. Actually, he was my mentor, my first officer, and I came on the job, and actually, I'd known him my whole life with my dad being a volunteer. Captain Kenny had been here for quite a long time. I just kind of wanted to say a special thank you to Chief Long and the Sylvania Township Police Department's Honor Guard. They were actually present with us for the drive-by, helped us with the saluting and that, and Chief, thank you very much for, one of their members actually volunteering to come and help us. It was a tough day all around, but we sent Captain Kenny off the way we believe he should have been sent off, so. Couple of the quick things, we had, we received two huge grants this year. One of them was for the radios. I wanted to let you know, all the radios have been installed, all the new portables are in place. Also, this week, we took delivery of the new SCBA, that we got the almost four hundred thousand dollar grant for all new SCBA for the department. Those were delivered, and we checked them all in, everything was there, so we will be giving some training started on that, and those will go in place hopefully before the first of the year. And also, the new transport unit was picked up and driven back by me from Columbus, and it is now, radios have been installed, and today it was at DR Ebo having the MDT installed, so I hope to have that in service before the end of the year also. Second page, just one anniversary, some, a couple of pictures of some items and some incidents that we had. We assisted over a strain of hand with a pumpkin toss, their principal ass over urine. Our guys actually get a big kick out of watching those being dropped from the, the roof. We had a, a car crash on Centennial Road with good outcome, thank God, and then on the bottom was a working structure fire on Franklin Drive, which is just west of McClove Road on the north side of Sylvania Avenue. The picture on the right was what the first due crew seen, so, and if you look at the picture on the left, that house still looks that way even with what it looks like on the right. So the guys did a great job with knocking that fire down, thank God, no injuries. Next page, well, we're down just a few incidents, but I think we were having a little bit of problem with our computer system, so I don't think we got all of the run totals in yet, so if there's any additions or corrections on it, we'll be sure to get those to you. Again, our overlapping runs are at about forty percent, so a little concerned, but it's down a little bit from before, from last month. So, months' transports by apparatus, we were up from one hundred and fifty-five in twenty eighteen to two hundred and one in nineteen. Community risk reduction, as I reported last month, Chief Felick will be retiring. His last day is January seventeenth of twenty twenty, so we've been trying to get him out there and get his face out in the public a little bit more before he leaves us. So he's been out with firefighter Hillard and the crews doing schools. He's been doing a lot of stuff with the state and making sure that Shane's up to snuff with what Mike does with the state, so when Mike does retire, we should be in good hands. Training was normal, normal amounts of training. We've had some good weather, we've had some bad weather, so some of it's been internal. We did do some extra hands-on training with Lucas County EMS. There's a couple of new lifesaving devices out, and we were asked to be one of the departments to actually carry it and start with the new equipment. Soon as some numbers come through, I'll be sure to bring those to you guys. Last page, I'm, I'm happy to say that overtime is not at a thousand hours. We had seven hundred and thirty hours, so we were able to get a couple of our people back from FMLA. However, I still have four off on FMLA, so that's my monthly report. Questions?
Questions to the chief?
Okay, I do, I do apologize for the, the two resolutions, late resolutions. The first one is nineteen-158. I'm asking for a one-time waiver to allow Jennifer Howard to roll over more than just forty hours of vacation time, as you are aware. She's been my only top, my administrative assistant for the last six months, and with the, normally she'll take time in November. With negotiations and budget, I wasn't able to give her a lot of time off, so it would be instead of forty hours rolling over, somewhere in the vicinity of seventy hours. Unfortunately, there's not enough time between now and the end of the year to tell her to take vacation. Not only that, I need her there because we have stuff we have to finish before the end of the year, so I'm asking for a one-time allowance to let Jennifer roll over more than forty hours for the policy.
I'll move Resolution nineteen-158 in regard to rolling over her time. If you're aware, we had our, the last meeting for the Oxford Afford, she put in, we were kind of short-handed there.
Second.
What did we have? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Let's move on back.
Oh, we're getting there. Mr. Genoway?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes. And the last one is Resolution 19-159. That came from the Lucas County EMS Board. They decided and voted for a 0% raise from Lucas County in our operating contract for another year.
I'll move Resolution 19-159 in regard to the EMS continuance.
Second. Mr. Genoway?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes.
And I do want to make a note that I voted no for that, so I thought we should have had at least some type of a raise. I wasn't, I mean, we've had zeros, I think, for the last three years. So I know everybody's hurting, but so are we. So my vote was a no on that one.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
All right, chief.
The best for last, and nobody wants to hear anything we want to get busy in.
Finish your executive session and get out of here.
I get it. But thank you.
So I could say it, if you really have any questions. There was nothing, you know, or shoving. We had a few burglies on the, you know, what a gentleman, I always like to say, classify them as legitimate, and the ones that I don't think are so legitimate that many of these right now, and a couple of them. But calls for service are up this year, about 1,500 for the year. So we're usually about 150 each, they're about each month. So they've been going up, and sort of reports and that. So we've been missing numbers this year, but we're doing fine. The burglary stuff from our vehicles are all just a little bit below last year for year-to-date. So going into December, I feel good about that. So I just jinxed it. So, nobody has anything further, I know.
Any questions for the chief?
Any questions? No?
Good report, chief. I move to go into executive session at 5:55. Collective bargaining for the road decelerating personnel non-union.
Mr. Genoway?
Yeah, call, Mr. Genoway?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes. And we'll load anybody that joins us. I'm at in the minutes. You want to hand that to Jamie? That's for Bud.
Thank you. And then I'll just leave those for the, for the minutes.
Okay. Yes.
I'll move to come out of executive session at 6:31.
Second.
Mr. Genoway?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes. And I'll move me adjourned at 6:32.
Second.
And we're not taking any action on the executive committee.
Mr. Genoway?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Very good.
Hi, everybody. Merry Christmas.